Good evening. I would like to call to order the Kaiser City Council in regular session. It is Monday, October 16th, 2023, and ask our city recorder to please call roll.
Councillor Reed.
Here.
Councillor Hesman.
Here.
Councillor Kohler.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
Councillor President Starr.
Here.
Councillor Drian.
Here.
Councillor Cross.
Councillor Cross is excused this evening for work.
Youth councillor Woodard.
Here.
Thank you very much. If you are able, I invite you to rise and invite all of you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Well, with all of the guests in the room, I think there is a very special Order of Business. Before we go to the first item, I would like to make one change in the agenda for this evening with the consent of council to add a third item under Special Orders of Business, and that is to for an informational-only presentation from the fire chiefs from Marion County and Kaiser Fire District. Does anybody disagree? Okay, that change is made in the agenda. We will then, however, start with the promotion of Tim Hyden to Lieutenant with the Kaiser Police Department. Chief Copeland.
First of all, thank you to his family, to mom and dad especially. Without you, he wouldn't be here. To wife Katie and the kids, Jackson and Gus. This is a special moment, not only for the family to celebrate this success, but for the city of Kaiser as well. Tim started his law enforcement career at Silverton Police Department, actually with my brother over there, Justin, 13 years ago, and then kind of worked there as motor patrol, some motor, and then got promoted to sergeant right before he came over to Kaiser and came to us three years ago. And very quickly learned that this guy is a very informal leader, like he came as a patrol officer, just working the road, a lot of night shift because it worked for the family, but people gravitated to him. And it was very clear that he was going to be a leader within our organization. We're a small agency, so we don't get a lot of promotions. He never had an opportunity to put in for sergeant based on his time and what he has done in his career for us anyways. Like I said, he came as a sergeant from Silverton and then just worked night shift patrol and then came to a couple day shifts. And he just always does the right thing for the right reason. And we talk about hiring people for the right reasons. We hire for five attributes right now. We hire for humble, we hire for helpfulness, empathy, we hire for conscientiousness, and for, what's the last one?
And for the conscientiousness, that's courage.
It's a quiz.
Courage, and courage, which courage has a couple implications, right? Go into a burning building, go to the gunfight, but also says integrity, the integrity, the courage to stand up for what's right. And this guy, not only by what I think of him, but by those officers over there that had to fill out, we put out these peer reviews, and we asked people to give us feedback on who Tim is as a person, as a coworker. And every one of them said that he embodies all of those, plus he's very hardworking. He treats the public with respect all the time. He's impartial and he's fair. All the things that we try to be as cops, he is. And I couldn't be more proud that he put in one for lieutenant as an officer. And then how he performed during the interview was amazing. And he's very mature. He is just the right guy to lead this department, to lead the patrol division, to be the face for the, you know, him and I are going to be at a lot of public events. And if you talk to him, you'll know that he engages very well. And he cares about the Kaiser community. He cares about the folks he comes in contact with. That's seen all the time. So... Anyways, as a police chief, he was my first promotion. And I couldn't be more proud to work side by side with Tim. We've worked together for, you know, a full week and a day now, and it's been amazing. But it's been really good, just the conversations and where this department's going to go is in the right direction to set us forward for the future. And the citizens of Kaiser, you guys are lucky. If you're watching out there, you're lucky to have him as your patrol lieutenant. Leading the patrol division, making sure things are done right, that the citizens are treated well, that our officers are held accountable. All these things that are super important for patrol lieutenant to have, he's got it. He's the man. It's awesome. What else? He's really good at his speeches. So, on the fly, I gave him about 15 seconds notice. I just asked him if he wanted to say a couple words, so.
Thanks, Chief Copeland. Thanks to everybody being here. It really means a lot to me. Couldn't have done it without all of you, especially my family. So, like Chief Copeland said, really appreciate my family being here, folks with the department, as well as folks I've worked with, and looking forward to continuing to work with them in the future. As Chief Copeland said, coming over from Silverton, I was really just looking for, it felt like a family there, and I was looking to continue that feeling. And I got to say, the community of Kaiser was nothing short of that. So, as soon as I got here, I felt instantly welcomed by not only the city, community members, as well as the police department. So, instantly felt welcomed and felt like I was part of a team. Always knew that I wanted to be a leader here. And so, when this position opened up, I knew that that was a perfect role for me and something that I wanted to be a part of moving forward. Again, thanks to my family and friends and everybody else that I work with and the community members for being here.
Congratulations.
So, Chief?
Yes.
With your permission, can I get a picture of you and lieutenant and other officers in the room together?
Absolutely.
And one more round of applause for Lieutenant Hyden.
I try really hard to stand.
Safety Council.
Okay, this looks pretty dang good. You guys got the tall guy in the center? All right, are you ready? Set, ready, who's in charge of this? All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I really appreciate everybody being here, especially family and friends. We all know that Public Safety Service is something that is a family commitment. Thank you to Lieutenant's family and all the friends for being part of his support system. I'd like to now go to a special presentation from the Marion County Economic Development Strategy Update. Let's see, getting her all set up there. Fantastic. So, Kelly, come on up and take it away. Looking forward to this presentation.
Good evening.
If you want to pull the microphone a little bit closer to you, that way the folks at home can hear you.
Great. Can you see my presentation?
We can. And I think John is going to be bringing that up. Wait for it. There's somebody back there. Supposed to be coming up on the screen.
All right, now we're rocking and rolling.
Fantastic.
Good evening, Mayor and councillors. My name is Kelly Weiss. I'm the Economic Development Program Manager with Marion County. And today, I wanted to talk to you guys about the opportunity for some feedback on our upcoming strategy update. So, we are developing our new strategy for the next five years for our program. And I want to make sure we get feedback from all of our cities. So, I've been reaching out to all 20 of our incorporated cities and attending city council meetings and attending staff meetings, making sure that everybody knows that this is happening and that we want your feedback. But I guess the first thing to start talking about is what the heck is our program. So, our Economic Development Program promotes efforts that help grow the economy, which seems fairly obvious. So, this would be things that increase employment or reduce the loss of employment, and that's usually what people think about when they think about economic development. But it can also be a lot of things that help improve standard of living. So, anything that really helps improve the economy, improve quality of life in our communities is economic development. And our funding comes from video lottery proceeds. So, 2.5% of video lottery sales in Oregon go to Oregon's counties to promote economic development, and Marion County's portion of that goes to our Economic Development Program. And that averages about $2 million each fiscal year. And then we do our best to leverage those funds with other funding sources to be able to bring even more dollars to our community. This year is an anomaly, I will say. So, this year, we have 19 million in grants and other funding resources for our program. But I will say, most of that is for wildfire recovery up in the canyon. So, this very colorful slide talks about our current programs. So, we have three different areas of focus right now. The first is lottery distribution, which is basically getting that funding in and getting it out into the community as soon as possible. The one that most of our communities know the most about is our Community Prosperity Initiative, where we fund $15,000 for each of our incorporated cities to use for whatever economic development purposes that you have that's important for your city. Other programs that we have, we have a newly established grant program called the Emergent Economic Opportunity Program, which basically provides funding for projects that might not be able to be accomplished if not for that extra oomph at the end. Usually it's for that kind of gap financing, making sure that something gets accomplished and that there aren't some projects just sitting there languishing because of lack of funding. But most of our staff time is spent on business and workforce and infrastructure and economic investments. So, for business and workforce, we partner with a lot of other organizations to make sure that we're promoting business support as well as workforce support. So, we partner with Sedcor for business retention and expansion. We have a business retention and expansion manager in Marion County that our program helps fund. And then we partner with Willamette Workforce Partnership. So, we help fund the Youth Wage Grant, which is a grant program where we provide $5 an hour for businesses to hire youth in their first job, so youth in that 14 to 17 range. Because we know how hard it is for those businesses in training up those youth, and we want to make sure there's an incentive to do so. We also partner with our chambers. We've recently established a small business support grant for our chambers to be able to utilize for whatever their economic development goals are. And then we've partnered with United Way for a grant program for the Salem Community Investment Fund, which helped fund their senior cottage housing, as well as some other programs. And then we've been working to establish the Canyon Area Business Forgivable Loan Program to provide some financing opportunities for businesses up in the San Em Canyon. And then in infrastructure and economic investments, a lot of these efforts span up in the canyon for wildfire recovery, but we do consider tourism as part of this effort. We've historically funded Travel Salem, and then also the Oregon Garden is part of our tourism effort. And then most of the rest of this lands in the canyon. So, we've supported both with staff time, as well as financing, the North San Em Sewer Authority, which is the government organization that the four San Em Canyon communities created to implement their sewer once it gets established. Then we're working on the Detroit Marina's excavation, which is excavating underneath the two marinas at Detroit Lake to allow them to operate at a lower lake level and expand their summer season. And then most of our grant funding this year is the Opel Creek Promise Funding. So, when the Opel Creek Wilderness was established back in 1996, the establishment of that, the federal government said that they would provide the canyon communities $15 million to offset the loss of timber revenue, and the dollars never actually came. So, Marion County has been fighting for those dollars for a long time. And we have recently been able to receive grant dollars through Business Oregon and the Forest Service to get those dollars. So, now we're going to be implementing those and getting those out into the San Em Canyon communities over the next few years, which is super exciting. And then in wildfire recovery, we've been helping the cities of Detroit and Gates in downtown planning, helping them determine how they want to redevelop now that they're starting over effectively. And then we also have been working very hard with broadband, doing our best to provide public-private partnerships to be able to bring broadband to a lot of our rural communities. But I don't want to spend too much time talking about what we currently do because what I'm really here for today is to hear from you, what you're doing, how we could partner, how we can make sure that we're all kind of moving in the same direction for our economic goals. So, this is a general outline of our Economic Development Strategy Project. Basically, I've been going out to all of our cities over the last few months. And it'll be through mid-November to hear from you, hear what your big goals are, what the projects are that you're working on. We're going to take all of that information and feed it into the development of a draft strategy. That'll be prepared for early December, and I'll get that out to each of our communities to look at, and you can say, "Oh, my gosh, you totally missed the boat. We mentioned this and that's not in here." Or you could say, "Oh, great job. All the things we wanted are included in that." So, we'll get that out in early December with comments due towards the end of December. And then it'll go to our Board of Commissioners for consideration and potential adoption in early 2024. So, I don't want to put anybody on the spot. So, we have a survey that you're welcome to complete. There's the local government survey. There's a QR code on the slide. I also put a flyer at the front as you're walking in. You're welcome to complete this survey either as individual city councillors, as staff, or do it as a city as a whole. Either way works for me. I just want to make sure that we have feedback. I'm also happy to take feedback here on the dais. I just don't want to put anybody on the spot. I know it takes some time and some thought. Also, anybody in the audience, we also have a public survey available. So, if you would like to provide feedback on our strategy, we'd love to have that as well. So, you're welcome to use the QR code on the screen or steal one of the flyers as you head out of the room. And with that, I'm open to any questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Bisson, can we get lights at some point? Thank you. While she's, oh, thank you, Bill. While she's doing that, while he's doing that, I had a question back on the slide. We were talking about Travel Salem, and I noticed you said historically have funded. That is no longer the case. Is that correct?
Yes, as of right now, we are not currently funding Travel Salem, although there's been discussions about how to continue to support tourism in the future. So... We do not currently have a contract with Travel Salem.
Because as I understand, that terminated on July 1st with no notification to the cities outside of Salem that, whose DOT go to that. Is that correct? We were not, so Kaiser does not have a separate contract. Our, we were receiving services, Travel Salem, via the Marion County contract that ended July 1st, as I understand it.
I was not aware that Kaiser was specifically called out as part of the funding. But yes, Travel Salem has historically, over the past five years, received funding from Marion County through our Economic Development Program to market all of Marion County for tourism. And they have been well aware of us moving forward and talking through some other opportunities for procurement. We've done an RFP fairly recently, and then we've been talking about a potential grant program, so.
Interesting. Thank you. Any other questions? Councillor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, I guess as kind of a follow-up to that, it doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense to end the contract without having something to replace it with. Can you just explain some of the reasoning behind that, perhaps?
Yeah, so the contract was for a five-year term, so it expired. There was quite a few conversations with Travel Salem, as well as other DMOs in the region about potential methods for doing marketing for the region in the future. We did an RFP in the spring and asked DMOs to submit, and we received a couple. But there was nobody who was directly awarded from that, and now we're working with our board to determine how to move forward.
Thank you.
Councillor President Starr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, for everybody watching, can you explain what a DMO is?
Yeah, it's a destination management organization. So, how tourism works in Oregon is we have Travel Oregon, who's kind of our main tourism entity. And then there's going to be regional destination management organizations. So, Oregon is split up into seven different regions for tourism-related purposes. Ours is the Willamette Valley Visitors Association. And then other organizations, usually it's going to be marketing organizations, often it's chambers, will submit to Travel Oregon to become destination management organizations.
So, we have nobody doing that for Marion County?
We have quite a few destination management organizations in Marion County. I couldn't quote you them. But there's quite a few of our chambers who are, Travel Salem is one, there's the North Marion Tourism Collaborative is one.
But you just said Travel Salem's contract expired. I'm confused. So, I don't understand how their contract can be expired, but then you just said they're providing services.
Yes. So, funding through Marion County Economic Development Program, that contract has expired. But that's irregardless of whether or not they're a DMO, a destination management organization. That's a designation through Travel Oregon.
So, who's doing that in lieu of what Travel Salem was doing for, like, us?
There's no requirement that economic development funding be funneled to tourism marketing. So, that's not a requirement. It's a board decision as to whether or not that funding gets channeled. I'm happy to relay any feedback that Kaiser has related to that, and that would be helpful. But yeah, those decisions as to whether or not we fund Travel Salem or any other tourism marketing are fully in our Board of Commissioners seat.
So, where did those dollars go that were going to Travel Salem?
They have not been allocated as of yet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, my understanding is the funding from the county has ceased, but they are still functioning as an organization with other funding? Is that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I had another one. And you answered one of them. It was on the funding streams for leveraged dollars, and so most of that is wildlife, wildlife. Well, yes, the wildlife will recover as well, but wildfire recovery, so that leveraged funds is primarily for the San Em Canyon recovery.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, the general, the dollars that you're over here for this particular program is the two?
Yes, so our general funding comes from video lottery revenue, and that's 2.2 million in the current fiscal year. And that's been fairly steady for the past five years.
Okay.
Aside from COVID.
We kind of take that, those two or three years, maybe set them aside and pat them on the head.
This little anomaly.
Yes. Rearview mirror, thank goodness.
Yes.
And then you just talked about chamber coordination a little bit. So, is part of your work then collaboration with the chambers across the Marion County region? To describe how some of that works, I'm curious.
Yeah, over the past year. So, this has not been over a long, long term. Marion County has been convening our chambers and holding quarterly meetings to allow them an opportunity to discuss, have feedback, really like work together well. And then through that effort, we've established the Small Business Support Program. Don't quote me on the acronym, but it's basically a grant program for our chambers. So, that way, they can apply for dollars for use however they see fit for their economic purposes. Usually, it's for small business support programs.
Okay. Thank you. That was helpful. Anything else? We'll have an opportunity then. We all have the QR code, and I encourage people here in the audience to also get online and on the public one and put out input. And Ms. Bisson, is it possible to put it on our website to encourage people to participate?
Yes, we can do that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Weiss. Really appreciate you coming.
Thank you very much for your time. Have a good rest of the evening.
You too. All right. We'll put up the screen and invite up the fire chiefs for our two fire districts. As they both have levies on the ballot, we understand these will be informational, as they are staff members. And if people want additional information from another point of view, they're welcome to go to the websites for further information. It's a pleasure to welcome Chief McMahon and Chief Russell.
Oh, thank you.
Was that already decided?
No, there was nothing like that. It was.
Rock paper. Mayor Clark, council members and city staff, thank you for allowing us the time to speak to you tonight. If I may real quickly, I'd like to once again congratulate Chief Copeland and say just what a great choice it was for the community. And we really look forward to working with him in the future.
Thank you.
We want to start by sharing a little information, just an update on your local fire districts. We've been doing what we can to collaborate and work together. We're sharing the Clear Lake Fire Station. Chief McMahon has been kind enough to share some space with us. We had some space constraints at our fire station. We needed some room for additional apparatus and personnel. And Chief McMahon was nice enough to share that with us. What that's gotten for us is better fire and emergency medical response on the north end of Kaiser. It's helping out Marion County and it's helping out Kaiser Fire just as much. There's an area in between there where it's a little bit quicker to get to from Marion County Station into Kaiser Fire District. And our ambulance being up there has really been a benefit to us. Some of the harder benefits to put a value on has been the interoperability of the crews, just the crews getting to know each other and working together. So, when they do respond on calls, they're familiar with each other. And it's been good to get that interoperation and the training and them just working together and sharing some space up there and hanging out. Do you have anything you would like to add to that? Thank you. It really has been great, though. I think Chief McMahon and I are both dedicated to our primary focus being what's best for the community. And we've made decisions not based on personal feelings, but based on what's best for the community. And that was a good move for the community, getting that extra unit up there. We continue to have conversations about what we can do in the future to work together and support each other with the focus, again, being the community. It's, I find it's easy to make decisions if you base it on what's the right thing to do and what's best for the people we serve. And I think this was our first step towards that. So, with that, our operating levy is currently at the rate of 59 cents, and it's just not going to be adequate for the next five years to support our operations. And then you factor in growth of the community and population growth, and then facilities and apartments and houses, just the infill and the growth. It's not going to be enough to keep up. We are proposing a new rate of 99 cents. And with that rate, that'll keep us healthy over the next five years and will allow us to slightly grow with that to address the needs of the community and maintain our six-minute response time. So, it's a pretty big deal for us to be able to do that and just to continue to serve the community at the level that they have come to expect of us.
My turn.
Your turn.
Welcome, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I echo Chief Russell's, a lot of his comments, all of his comments. It's been a great partnership, continues to be a great partnership, and something that both of us, I think, are very proud to be able to sit side by side and collaborate versus, you know, history of things. We respond to calls every day, side by side, so why shouldn't we look for opportunities? You know, we had extra space up at our Clear Lake Station. They have an IT guy that can help us out when we need some help. So, it benefits both sides. So, look forward to expanding that, seeing where opportunities grow. We continue to meet monthly. We go out for lunch and just bad ideas around, and some of them stick, some of them won't work, some of them are going to take some time. But the fact that we're talking and, you know, going through is good for the citizens, and that's what's important. We have multiple cases in the north end of our district and north end of Kaiser where are success stories, where we've had an ambulance and a fire truck and, you know, cardiac arrest patient where they were able to get on scene within a few minutes. patient where they were able to get on scene within a few minutes and save his life to enough that that gentleman wanted to basically get back on his bike and continue riding his bike versus go to the hospital. Probably wasn't the best thing, but those, that's why this is important. So we appreciate the opportunity there. We also have a local option tax levy on. We, during the COVID and all the stuff that we'll put in the rearview mirror, had some struggles and we've come back stronger, a lot stronger through that. So we're, our board put out a replacement tax levy on this ballot in 2024, which is a couple of years early for 99 cents. That would replace the 59 cent levy. So that 59 cents, if approved by the voters, would go away and the 99 cent would come into play starting next year and go put us stable for the next five years. Our call volume for Fire District One, which is very similar to regional agencies, 30% increase in call volumes in the last three years. We're on track for 11,000 calls. And it's just, that's 35 a day. Some days we're running 50. You know, we're all helping each other, you know, for multitude of reasons. Communities are growing, you know. Fire District One has grown 9,000 citizens since 2010, which is hard to believe because a lot of our areas are rural. But with the urban growth boundary, they're just popping things all over the place in there. So increased demands for service. We also have a federal grant that we were lucky enough to bring back funding for our second paid engine company down in the Four Corners area that runs out early 2025. So that's another reason that we're come back going to the voters early in 2023 here so that we can kind of hopefully avoid any of the things that may come up in 2024 with the bigger elections and all of that. So what that means to the Kaiser residents in our north end, you know, even though a lot of our calls are on the east side in the Lancaster corridor, our call volume up here in the north end continues to dramatically increase as infill is happening into the Brooks and then helping Kaiser out. So, you know, that, we have a swing company at Clear Lake. So if we can keep the fire engines, the ambulances and the core with this funding from the 99 cents, we can keep our swing company engine medic unit up in the north end, which helps our citizens, which then helps Kaiser's. We're just all one big happy family, pretty close, but one big happy family. So it's important that everything works together as a system, so.
All right, thank you both very much. And first I want to start off with saying thank you to both of you for leading your district personnel in collaboration with your boards of directors into a wonderful relationship and providing service to our community. So huge thank you for that. I would like to open up for questions from the council. So we have no questions at this time, don't be a stranger. And I really, again, want to appreciate the wonderful open house last Monday. That was a great community event to see so many organizations from all of our community were there at the Kaiser Fire Hall. That was a lot of fun. Hats off to Anne Marie Storms, the Deputy Fire Marshal for that as well.
All right, thank you.
Well, thank you both very much.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our special orders of distance this evening. We all now go to committee reports. I do have an email from Counselor Cross. There was a question about having, needing to appoint somebody for position, I think she's position four, to the Community Development, Community Diversity Engagement Committee. And it is her intent to reappoint Carrie Depp Brown to, for another term of office. So I wanted to get that one on the record. I have some folks here for committee reports and I'm going to start off with the Parks Board, and that would be Lisa Sajaka.
Hello. Good evening, Madam Mayor, city councilors, staff, people in the audience, people in TV land. I'm Lisa Sajaka, I live in Kaiser, I'm the Vice Chair of the Parks Board. And I'm here to talk about our Parks Board meeting last Tuesday. It was a great meeting, fairly easy, fairly, fairly smooth. The people who reported on their parks, their parks all look good. We had lots and lots of mention of leaves, lots and lots of mention of wonderful public work staff who do above and beyond and make everything safe and clean and wonderful. We are just a very, very lucky community to have such good staff. I mean, we saw all the emergency services people, we saw the lovely police, so, I mean, there were sheriffs here. It was wonderful. I mean, we are just one of the best communities ever. So we also have 19 parks that are beyond amazing. And when I tell people from other places that we have 19 parks, they're a little bit astounded. It's like, well, you should go to them, they're good. Except for don't go to Kaiser Rapids because it's too good for you guys. Oh, wait. Okay, this is just a Kaiser broadcast.
This is just us.
Yeah, it's a Kaiser broadcast.
It's just us, we're good.
You guys know.
Yeah.
So one of the items of business we had is we had our first grants request for this fiscal year. It was nice to see somebody asking for a grant early in the season. We still have plenty of grants money. I don't know how much, but we still have plenty to, so people can think of ideas and come to us with ways to improve. Is everything okay?
I'm going to actually circle down with the chiefs.
The other thing is we, there is a prototype garbage can at Kaiser Rapids Park. It was made with some surplus materials from the building of the Big Toy. I believe it was some of the pickets that were removed when people bought pickets. And so this garbage can is amazing. It's off the ground, it's got a lid, the lid is attached, the wind doesn't blow it off, it doesn't get knocked over. It, it is beyond amazing and we have one of them. And it's been there for a year, we've had no problems. But if there are any Eagle Scouts listening, we have, that's a great project, but there's also some other projects that Robert Johnson has. So if any Eagle Scouts are wondering, gosh, what am I going to do? We, we got you covered. So please, please contact us.
Love it.
Oh, let's see, da, 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 da. Our next meeting is November 14th. I believe with the Volunteer Coordinating Committee, we had three new members appointed. I don't think we got a youth member appointed yet. So just to put it out there, we really, really, really would love to have someone that is youth, who's interested in parks. And parks isn't just, you know, walking the dog like, you know, nice to date folks. It's also sports parks. There are all sorts of things you can do at the park. So if anybody knows any kids out there that want to make a difference, it also looks good on applications. So, anyway. There weren't, there was nothing bad. I mean, everything, there were not any complaints. So, anyway. Any questions?
Thank you. Youth Counselor Woodard, do you want to do some recruitment for a Parks Liaison?
Yeah, I think I was planning on, I think I saw like another email or something about they're bringing some empty liaison positions. And so I was planning on reaching out to like McNary's leadership, like student body leadership to kind of get that out there or something in our College and Career Center. And Ms. Connolly is super good at that stuff, so that's what I'm thinking at least.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Counselor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, our, one of our volunteering committee members is also a McNary teacher. And she has put together a slide to go in to advisories and so forth. So she and it's Mrs. Baylon.
Oh, Ms. Baylon.
Yeah. Yeah, so anyway, we're working on that from a couple of different ends. So between Counselor Woodard and I and, and Ms. Baylon, we'll get you somebody.
Perfect, thank you.
Fantastic. I'm going to go to Council President Starr and then Counselor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Lisa, can you give an update on the progress of the memorial at the Little League Field? Wasn't there the lady had, it was a?
Yes, it was the, there, her, her mother?
Yes.
Had a plaque on the, it was a drinking fountain. A drinking fountain?
Just get some charades going here.
Right, right. And I know, I mean, like, the one position that has been vacant for a portion of this year is the person who checks on Little League. And so the chair went and checked on Little League and saw, you know, that things are being taken care of and that, you know. But what I was told is that that woman got together with Robert and they went and they found kind of what was going on and then that they were going to take it from there. So I have not heard that it's been taken care of.
Mr. Lawyer?
But Mr. Lawyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I talked with Robert, we have ordered the plaque and I thought I saw the invoice come through about a week ago that we've received it, but I'm not positive of that.
Nice.
But we talked about it. And because of the uncertainty and how long it's been there, we knew there was no way we could go back to anybody to look for some help. So we just purchased a plaque to replace the one that was missing.
Thank you for getting that together.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Fantastic. I know that's very meaningful for the family.
Thank you. Counselor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to apologize for not being in the meeting on Tuesday.
See, and I didn't even call you out.
Fast up. Okay, thank you very much and thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And Robert Becker? Come on down to talk about the Kaiser Cultural Center. And after that will be Barbara Minor.
Thank you for allowing me to give you this update. I'm Robert Becker, I'm the president of the current Kaiser Heritage Foundation. And I'd just like to give you an update on three specific projects the foundation and the Kaiser Museum are working on. The first one is through the recent funding we received through APR funding, we are working to replace our exterior doors with ADA universal doors. The doors are pretty much ready to go. However, we have ran into just a little bit of a glitch because we want to put an electronic, Achilles electronic system in there. And that is proving somewhat of a challenge. So we are working actively to get the correct system in place so we can get that installed along with the doors at the same time and be good to go. So I just wanted to let everyone know we are actively working on that. One of the, one of the accomplishments in these past six months, though, that I'm extremely proud of is by the work of Tammy Wild, our historian. By her efforts and her application, we were awarded a grant to display and exhibit as part of the Capitol History Gateway Exhibit Sponsorship Program. The Capitol History Gateway Exhibit Sponsorship Program supports Oregon public and nonprofit museums and organizations to produce an exhibit that meets one or both of the following goals. Increase participation in Oregon's democracy, increase interest in Oregon's history and especially in the history of government. And we will be showcasing a Thomasa virtual exhibit within the next year or so, as well as a physical exhibit when the cap reopens in 2025. I want to stress again, this is on the work of Tammy Wild. She called me up and she said, I'm going to apply for this state scholarship. I'm like, okay. And she didn't quite understand what she, she just went with it. And I'll be honest, her application did not get in the first try, but they were so impressed with it that they had a special meeting with us to make sure that they could help us work through the little difficulties or little challenges to make sure that that got approved. And it did. So we are looking forward to getting that virtual exhibit up in the year and then back in the Capitol.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Bravo, yes.
Thank you. During the time that I've been here with the Kaiser Heritage Museum, we have made incremental steps to redesign our exhibit space and the stories we tell, which these have included a new display case, better lighting, our interactive kiosk, as well as opening up our space and putting our old histories on QR codes. These have been incremental changes and they have been a much, a great step forward in how we want to tell the Kaiser story. But I recognize that the overall look of the museum hasn't changed these past years. So that is going to change. I am pleased to share that the Kaiser Heritage Museum has been accepted into the Oregon Heritage Mentor Corps Program. This program pairs the Kaiser Heritage Museum with an Oregon Heritage Professional for a nine-month period, which can be renewed as new projects come up, to guide us through what we are calling our RAM project, which is the reimagining and modernization of our museum. We estimate that this project could take perhaps up to five years to fully complete, as we will do this in stages. But once completed, it will allow us to better tell the Kaiser story through more interactive exhibits and a more engaging interpretation of what we have. I'm also pleased to share that joining us as part of this RAM team will be former city council, former City Councilor Marlene Parsons, Tracy Davis, and Debbie Lockhart. So we are assembling quite the team to get this all accomplished. Part of this change is also looking at how the museum defines ourself. Through a scholarship award, I had the privilege of attending the American Association of State and Local History, the 2023 conference in Boise Idol this past September. The first time the Kaiser Heritage Museum has been kind of on the national stage, if you will. One of the sessions brought up the term, what is a small museum? Well, a small museum can be, is pretty broad. It can be a lot of different things to a lot of different organizations. And as we were going through this discussion, I asked, well, how can we better define ourselves other than just as a small museum? The term community museum was brought up, which I immediately embraced. The Kaiser community is who we serve. So going forward, as we embark on this redesign, we are going to use that term to remind ourselves of who we are and what our mission is. And finally, given the opportunity to network with professionals and organizations throughout Oregon and nationwide, I learned that a lot of organizations really do not have the support of their city council or their local leaders. I just want to express how grateful I am that I, that we are not one of those organizations. I want to thank Mayor Clark and the city councilors and everybody for their continued support of the Kaiser Heritage Foundation and the Kaiser Heritage Community Museum. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, this is a tremendous achievement. And your dedication to bringing our museum to being a space where that we can be really proud of and really tell our story has been absolutely over the moon. Well done.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Becker? I am so excited to see this transformation and please keep us up to date. And we would love to come and be a part of helping, supporting, and of course, celebrating when it opens.
And it's already underway. We are, we're going, we've already had two meetings with Oregon Heritage Professional, who is just more than excited to help us out because interpretation planning is her thing. She chose us specifically, she's the, her name is Cam Amabile, and she is the head of the Mentor Corps Program. And she looked at our patients and said, yes, I'm going to take on you guys. So she really wants to help us out, so.
Oh, that's so exciting. Thank you, well done.
Thank you.
Counselor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So next month, we have our annual meeting at the Kaiser Heritage Foundation. So if people are interested in getting involved, we'd like to invite you.
Yes, you can email us at info@kaiserheritage.org.
And that, that date is which?
It's the second Tuesday. I don't have, don't know what that date is.
Okay, second Tuesday in November?
Yes.
For the annual meeting?
Yes.
It, that is the 14th.
14th, yeah.
Okay. 11, 14, does it have a time?
Six, uh, should be six o'clock.
6:00 PM, okay. Come on down and learn more and see more.
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Barbara Minor, Kaiser Library. And we have an update here on the summer program, so thank you for bringing this.
Colorful, colorful update. I'm Barbara Minor, I'm the president of the Kaiser Community Library. Robert is my landlord, he's a very good neighbor. And we, I have an announcement first. We have our semi-annual book sale this Friday and Saturday, the 20th and 21st, over in the Civic Center. We're open on Friday, nine to five, and Saturday, nine to four. If you, we have over 5,000 books ready to go to good homes. They charge, we, we charge a dollar for a hardback and 50 cents for a paperback. So if you have a buck, you can get a book. And if you'd like to strategize, the best selection is in the mornings when we bring in the fresh books. And the best bargains are Saturday, starting at 2:30. You bring in a grocery bag, you fill it up for $5. Okay. But I came to talk, to brag about our summer program. This, let's see, there we go. I have graphics here. We had 650. graphics here. We had 650 approximately participants in our summer program. That was behind the cultural center on the patio. We had Book Bingo where everyone wins and your prize is a new book. You pick it out yourself. We had Princesses and Spiderman and Juggul Mania, all kinds of programs on Wednesday afternoon. They, we saw a lot of return families from last year, but the growth was, well, we didn't get really good numbers last year, but we know we had more people in our programs. And we expanded two, we added two weeks because of our, our funding. We need to buy supplies and that kind of thing. So that was a great success. And then we have all these kids who come in wagons and on scooters and they go to the water park. Some of them come from the skate park. They go to the museum. Some of them go upstairs to the art gallery, but they're a little intimidated about that. So we, we're bringing in all these kids and then the library gets inundated after the program. The families come into the library and the graph in the middle shows the library visitors. A library visitor is anyone who walks in the door. You don't have to be a cardholder or any particular anything. You don't have to even live in Kaiser. And over the summer, we have more visitors. That's probably all, all libraries do that. I don't know. I only know this library. So we, we had the expected bump in, in the summer for visitors, but we're 50% higher than last year. We're very proud of that. So we have a lot of families out on the patio. They come in. And then what we're really proud about is we had a new system using our budget item to buy books for the kids. So we staged our volunteers in the kids section and we asked them what kind of books they wanted to read that we didn't have. 99% of our books are donated, which works really well in some areas, but not really well for the things that third graders want to read this year, right? We have a lot of Hardy Boys, not, not so popular. So we got requests from kids and then we went out and bought them and we put them on the shelves. And guess what? The kids checked them out, right? So we, specifically, we had twice the number of Spanish picture books checked out compared to last year, twice the number of early readers. These are the very first books that kids learn. This is, this is the critical point where we want them to have a book they love, a book they see it on the shelf and they want to take it home. I have pictures of the most checked out books in each category. For the Spanish picture books, it's a bilingual about colors. Biscuit is very popular with, with the early readers. Our junior graphic novel checkouts increased by 500%, which is kind of because we had very few last year. But, but some Thursdays after the Wednesday crowd, our shelf was actually empty. All those books were gone home with kids. And that makes us proud. And we need to buy more books. And the junior fiction book checkouts increased by 70%. So all of these are elementary school and preschool kids. They're coming to the library. They're checking out books. And we're proud of that. Any questions?
Fantastic work. Thank you so much. And it was such a joy to see the families out on the patio as we come down to the city hall this summer. I'm going to go to Counselor Housman and then Counselor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Barbara, the numbers are beautiful. Thank you so much for the presentation. Very encouraging to see the summer numbers. I mean, they speak for themselves, even if 2022 wasn't such a good year. There you go. People bounced back and came back.
Actually, we were, we were stronger in 22 than pre, prior to COVID. Our, our kids, we have a real emphasis on kids that, that, that we didn't have before.
I appreciate you correcting my priors on that. Look, looking ahead, given, given what you've seen, everything, everything that the library has been able to do, what do you need and where do you direct the people?
So we, we need continuity. So all these programs were developed by BJ Toey, who knows what she's doing because she was a professional children's librarian for a very long time. She's not going to be around forever, right? We need to, we need to be able to build on what we have done instead of have this turnover with every time we get a new person, we learn new things or have new areas of interest, right? We did, we did persuade her. We won't talk about the, okay, we persuaded her to join the board for one more year, but her term has been up and she will be on the board for one more year. So that's what we need, the continuity and the certainty of funding these things. Take small amounts of money, but a little money on buying children's books goes a very long way.
Fantastic. So start off with donate to the book sale and come to the book sale.
Yes.
But more also, your website has a place to donate?
Absolutely. Kaiserlibrary.org, all one word. Follow us on Facebook.
Counselor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So along the lines of donating, if people have books to donate for your sale, are those still being taken? And what is the process that people should do for the books?
We take books all year round. You just bring them to the library. You can even drop them in our library return box. We understand that they're not our books if they don't have our label on them. And we, we, we sort them in the office of, of the library. We do that all year round. We get about donation of about 1,000 books a month, which is amazing. And some of them are current bestsellers and very nice books. We obviously can't put 1,000 books a month on our shelves in the library. If you've been there, you know, we're pretty cozy. And the rest go, get sorted to the book sale.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Oh, I do have ones. What's coming up this fall? Aside from, we've got the book sale.
So we cannot have programs like we had in the summer because we don't have the space. And outdoors in December is not the same as outdoors in July. We are, thank you for that question. I meant to say that. We are open. Our board has voted that we will be open most days that school is out during the school year. We're closed for major holidays, but so, and we will have smaller programs on those days to draw kids into the library. We don't have room for 60 to 100 kids in our library. And follow us on Facebook to see what new activities are planned.
All right. Great. Thank you so much. Looking forward to this weekend for the book sale. Need some new reads. Thank you so much. Do we have anybody from the Public Arts Committee tonight? Okay, so that will go to Counselor Reed to report later. All right. Thank you very much. Public comment this time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for public hearing. We have no public hearings scheduled for this evening. Planning Commission. Oh. No, I didn't have it on my list. I'm sorry. I didn't have a, okay. No, no worries.
Thank you, Shane.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Hutches. I am the vice chair of the Planning Commission. We had a interesting but very uneventful meeting. Thank you, Shane. So we swore in two new commissioners, Rob Witters and Fernando Lopez. They're going to be great additions. And then our other major thing is Shane gave us a very interesting and educational presentation. I'm not, I'm being serious. It was, it was great. On Kaiser's walkable mixed use plan and kind of getting us all up to speed because that's probably something we're going to deal with a little bit more in the coming year or two. And he just wanted to make sure, especially with the new commissioners, that we all knew what was going on and some of the things that had happened in the past around that. So that was our whole meeting. Any questions?
When you said brief, you meant it.
I told you it'd be fast.
Any questions? Counselor Duran, anything further? All right. Thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you.
Good job, Mr. W. Thank, thank you so much. All right. Any other committees here to report tonight, if I failed to ask? Okay. Now we will go to public comment. This time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for public hearing. We have no public hearings scheduled for this evening. And I have one person signed up and that is Rich Walsh.
Good evening, Mayor, Council President, members of the council, city staff. May I ask how much time I have? Is it five minutes? All right. So I can't do.
Oh, name and city of residence for the record.
My name is Richard Walsh. My residence, my city residence is Kaiser. And more specifically, my residence is Kaiser Rapids Park, which is why I'm here. I was kind of expecting at some point to be on the agenda, having a public hearing about the modifications to the master plan on Kaiser Rapids Park. I didn't see one over the last couple of years. I do know that we're doing the, the soccer fields. I'm a big supporter of the soccer fields. As you know, I worked hard to get the land for the soccer fields and I worked hard to master plan it so that we had soccer fields. And I also came here to testify to match Marion County to get the money for the soccer fields. I'm a big fan of soccer fields. But I don't understand how the plans got all changed. So I want to pass this out.
Do I give that to Ms. Bissett? Yeah, just go ahead and give them all to, yeah, thank you.
This is what, this is what appears in the web, for the city of Kaiser, the webpage and on the master plan books and everything. This is still there. I just printed it out just now. And it shows a pretty good plan. Now, this is not the original plan, as you may recall. We used to have soccer fields right here and my house is on the top, right next to that white structure. It's right in the top center of this map. And the, we used to have soccer, we used to have softball fields there and that my house was on the outside of the, the house I'm renting is on the outside of the soccer field. And then, but it really has wonderful things that are still the same. We have still multi-use sports fields, which are basically where the soccer, where the soccer field should go is designated on this map. And the parking lot, and the parking lot you'll see is a very large parking lot. And that was done on purpose for event space. And so this is supposed to be a regional park for regional events and things like that. And so we had this massive parking lot because the only other place we have a massive parking lot is, is the Volcano Stadium and you can have events out there, but then you got, it's not ours and we have difficulty getting access. So this was a great spot where we can have community activities on a very large parking lot at the city's own doing. They can do it whenever they wanted to. And it can coordinate with a potential for a indoor sports facility. So this open green space you see, that was on an old plan was indoor sports facility. And it was still left green, so no big deal. That's great. It's got the, all that green space there. That white structure is going away. So as a result of that, there's plenty of space here to build a recreational facility. So everything's fine on this map. But I don't know quite what happened, but let me pass this out. But I, I asked the city manager for a copy of the current plan and I was quite surprised by this one because it has that whole green space near Shamua, which is the most valuable land in the entire park. I mean, just commercial value, just dealing with taxpayer money. That's the most valuable area. And what are we doing with that? We're not putting a recreational facility there, which was perfectly sited there for a reason. The reason was because you can have people come into the rec center and you can cut them off from the rest of the park. You can't do that if you have the rec center anywhere else. It has to be on Shamua and you can put a fence or whatever around it and limit the crowd. So that space, that very valuable space is now being designated for a storage shed that the public will not have access to. And the rest of it is parking lot. I mean, these lots, you know, quite frankly, I mean, just taxpayer resource, these lots are worth 200. I mean, if you were to break them up into individual lots, they'd be worth $200,000 a piece. We'd have the lot, my house sits on, it's probably worth a half a million bucks. And, and, or the house, you could probably sell it and get taxpayer money for it. And, and instead, you're making the house basically unlivable. Let me, let me pass this over. That's a picture of my backyard where I'm renting after this plan comes through. You take away all the green space and you put a small lineal parking lot, which is just two cars deep. You can't have a community event on that. You stretch out the parking space, not nearly as much parking space as you had in the master plan. And then you have it take up both sides of, basically my house is going to sit in the middle of a parking lot. And there's no public hearing on this. I, I look at every single agenda for this council and every single agenda for the Parks Board, and I never saw it come up that you're going to change the master plan. And I know it's not really a change or whatever of the master plan legally speaking, because it's still multi-use fields and so on, but it significantly changes the character of the park. You can no longer have an indoor facility planned. You took away all those rights for the future unless you want to build a storage facility and then tear it down. And, and it just, it just not make any sense. So if you look at, okay, look at the map and look at my new backyard with headlights shining right into it and tell me if you'd buy that for half a million bucks, you're decimating the city value. You need green space in between the fields so that people can play and throw their softballs. Kids can run around outside these fields. You don't have to put them 10 feet to a fence and then have no space for, for people, spectators to have fun. And you're not looking at the future with the open play event area down below. It is meant to be an open place, event area, and it needs huge amount of parking to be successful. Everyone, Marion County to go there, everyone at the fair to go there. You're going to have to have parking. And that's, was planned and it was taken away. And why wasn't it in a public hearing? So I'd love to take questions. It's extremely time. Otherwise, I guess I'm done.
Thank you very much. And if you have questions, please get these to the city manager. If, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Walsh? We have no questions at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else for public comment this evening? I have nobody else signed up. All right. We will go then. We don't even have anything under administrative action, so we're going to be going straight to the consent calendar. And Counselor President Starr, would you please read the items on tonight's consent calendar?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Under the consent calendar, we have item A, resolution authorizing the city attorney to sign Oregon supplement to statewide allocation agreement and future agreements in the national opiate litigation settlement. And item B, we have a resolution directing the finance director to take no further action to refund or refinance bonds related to Kaiser Station Area A Local Improvement District. Item C, the approval of September 18, 2023 Regular Session Minutes. And item D, approval of September 18, 2023 Work Session Minutes.
Thank you very much. Are there any items that counsel would like to pull? Seeing none? Counselor President Starr.
I move the Kaiser City Council adopt the consent calendar as read.
Second?
The consent calendar has been moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, signify by saying no. Hearing no objection. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. That's Counselor Cross. That takes us to other business. This time is provided to allow the mayor, city council members or staff an opportunity to bring new oral matters before the council that are not on tonight's agenda. Mr. Brown, does the staff have anything additional this evening?
We do not, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much, counselors. Counselor Housman?
Yeah, I do have one quick thing, Madam Mayor. And Ms. Bissett, you may have been privy to this. I've been told that my VCC appointee, RJ Navarro, is resigning. He expressed that to me, but did he communicate it to the city is my question?
He was not at the VCC meeting.
Not at the meeting? Okay.
But there was nothing mentioned about his resignation either.
Okay. He has told me this, so I suppose the next step is to look out for some formal documentation. And when that comes through, then I will get back with an appointment.
All right. Thank you very much. So yeah, once he submits a actual email to confirm, then you can move forward with a successor. And thank you very much to Mr. Navarro for your service. Thank you very much. Anything else? Okay. Oh, the municipal judge report. So Counselor Housman and I were assigned this year to observe our municipal judge, Judge Meyer, in action. And it's always a pleasure when I get a chance to come in and observe our municipal judge. As always, I have found him to be very respectful of everyone who comes before him, working very closely with our police officers to ensure that there is clarity in what the issue is, that the individual is here to address, that everybody's treated with a great deal of dignity and respect. He is painstakingly thorough and explains to people exactly what the process is. And I find that that helps people understand and brings a level of anxiety down, educates and takes opportunity to help people understand, especially if there is a misunderstanding of maybe why they're there or what should not have happened. So I really appreciate him taking a very educational approach to every case that comes before him. I really appreciate also that he works hard with, and our staff as well, to make sure that people who have issues regarding paying fines and so forth have options so that they're very cognizant that the burden that it can place on somebody to pay penalties can be significant for some families. And so our staff works very hard to ensure that it is not untoward for people to deal with. So that is my report for this year. So that is my report for this year, and I really appreciate the service of Judge Myers. Councilor Housman, were you able to observe?
I was unable to observe Judge Meyer in his court, but it is something that I look forward to doing in the future, at which time I'll make a report.
All right, thank you very much. And then in 2024, two other councillors are assigned, and I'll have to go look up who they are, but it's always available for any councillors to come and observe Judge Myers. And I would recommend doing so. As an observer. Which would be preferable. All right, let's go to staff updates. Mr. Brown?
Madam Mayor and Council, I'll just tell you, I met with Rich, Richard Walsh and Allison today for a little while, went over their concerns about the property.
Appreciate that. Thank you for updating us on that. Mr. Wood?
Nothing additional for me, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bisset.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Chief Copeland?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, we're pretty busy on our side of the House. We have a cool event coming up on October 28th with Officer Quintero is organizing. And it's at Plaza Morelia, which is a very south end of Kaiser on the right-hand side. They have fabulous meets there. But we're going to do an event from 10 to 12 on the 28th. We're going to get a big tent, do it right out front, and give away some pastas and some, some coffee and stuff like that. So it should be a lot of fun, very visible to the public as they're driving by. Should be really good. We also had a fun event with Faith in Blue last weekend, and we just hope to keep making that better and better each year. That was pretty fun. And just in our circles, the conversations that I have with other chiefs and sheriffs, even sat through a meeting with Kevin Mannix and his team. Measure 110 is, is going to be back on the ballot, so there's a lot of conversations about legislation changing that or maybe repealing that. For those who are unfamiliar with Measure 110, that's the, that's the, basically giving a citation for low, for illegal drugs. So with that, we've seen a complete rise in fentanyl overdoses and fentanyl-related, you know, we save a lot of people with using naloxone and Narcan. Our fire department does a phenomenal job. We have, each of one of our officers has Narcan in our cars, two of them as a matter of fact, and we, we can arrive faster based on that we're out in the community already. And our guys are reviving people with that and keeping them alive. Otherwise, we'd have a lot more deaths. But this is a big deal just in the, in coming up in the future for the community and, and for, really for those who are addicted to drugs to get them off. I mean, I was sitting next to Sheriff Garten, Polk County Sheriff, the other day, and we were having a conversation about this, and he gave some stats, so I don't know the exact number, but there were 6,000 citations issued for ballot Measure 110 since its inception. And, and the way it's supposed to work is the person receives a citation, gets a $100 fine, or they can call a number, which is to a crisis line, a treatment line where they can figure out how to get them into treatment. Only 50 people out of the 6,000 actually called that number. And I heard a number that two people actually went into treatment. So it's just, the good intent for ballot Measure 110 is not working on the, on the street level. So anyways, just keep that in mind, that's, those are the conversations we have, we talk about all the time, and hopefully can, can be pushing forward some, some new legislation to fix that and to really do something, not to put people into jail, but to get people into treatment where they need, need to be. So other than that, we, free to take questions if you have any.
Thank you very much. That was extremely helpful information. Really appreciate that. Any questions for the chief? Thank you. Council Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I, I'm wondering if you're equipping every car with two doses of Narcan, how much is that, how much is that costing?
Nothing to the police department.
Okay.
So we get those for free.
From whom?
That's a great question. I, I do, I have the email string, I just don't know the organization.
Yeah, it's a great tool to have at hand. I'm just, I was just wondering what that was doing, but that's good to know, thank you.
I can email the group back if you want to know.
Thank you.
Thank you, that'd be good to know. Any further questions? Councilor Housman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief Copeland, what are the current numbers or current volume of calls surrounding fentanyl? If you even divide by that, any, anything related to do with opiates or overdose abuse in that regard?
You know, I would have to look for us, we don't respond to all of them because they typically go to the fire department, they get toned to us, and if we get there first, maybe, sometimes we don't even go because we don't know what the problem is. You know, it comes in as a medical issue, and so I would have to lean on Chief Russell and see his numbers and pull those. I can say that we probably administer Narcan maybe one to two times a month. And then, it's some months it's more than that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Witham?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lawyer?
Nothing for me either, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, that will take us then to our council reports, and I'll start with Councilor Duran.
Well, since I was at the League of Oregon Cities this last week, I missed the planning commission, so I have nothing this week.
I'll bet Mr. Witham would be happy to give you the slides from the presentation.
I can watch the video.
There you go. All right, thank you very much. Council President Starr?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for your grace and patience as I reintegrated into a new normal, starting last week. I have, I attended the Gubser Neighborhood Association and the Volunteer Coordinating Committee meeting. So I think exciting things to come out of Gubser with the holiday, the Miracle of Lights event to continue on. So great partnership between the city, the Neighborhood Association, and the Marion-Polk Food Share. So it's fun to see all the groups coming together and the neighbors really coming together, and you can tell we're getting closer to the holidays because the excitement at the meetings is starting, you can see it's starting to grow. And then, again, just doing reappointments and, and new appointments at the Volunteer Coordinating Committee to, to some of our committees, and it's great to see some new faces joining the leadership in our committees.
Thank you very much. Councilor Kohler?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the Greater Northeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association on the 3rd, and we, we went over the Traffic Management Program and, and 60 pages long, but who's counting? But we did that on the 3rd. On the 4th, I came to the executive session, we had the 5th, the Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association. They didn't have a quorum until just the very end of the meeting. They talked about trees and sidewalks, and there's a number of noise complaints, 20 reports of noise since 2019 from a party house, and we can talk about that if you want to at some point. And they said that they really don't want a fence at the park in their neighborhood, so we did talk about that. We know about the community book sale coming up Wednesday, the 26th. The Kaiser Community Dinner McNary Culinary Department will be preparing and serving the food, so the 26th, 4:30 to 6:30. On the 6th and 7th, I forgot to mention, we did have our Ed Harris Trader Reese, the Scout Patch event at the Civic Center, and we were able to raise a little over $6,000 to help people get to scout camp that wouldn't otherwise be able to get there. So thank you for that support from the council and, and fun event. The 10, the 10/28, on the 28th, from 10 to noon, the Kligger Creek Watershed Council and the Kaiser Rotary Satellite Club will do the fall cleanup at the Wallace House. So come have a lot of fun with us, those are great events, and, and that's what I have for this event, this report.
All right, thank you very much. And you'll be using a one-hand shovel?
I will probably be missing that event.
Okay.
They, I, it's interesting, I went to the doctor and I, and I said, well, can I go back to work? And he said, sure, what do you do? I says, well, I'm a baggage handler for the airlines. And he said, no. That was a good try.
Yeah, that was a try, but no.
Councilor Kohler, I just wanted to make sure, you, you meant to say Wednesday, the 25th instead of the 26th, right?
I missed one.
For the dinner?
For the community dinner.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's 25th, yeah.
25th, all right.
It's a Wednesday, it was a Wednesday.
Last, the 4th Wednesday.
Yep. Looking forward to that indeed. Councilor Housman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilor Kohler, I hope your throwing arm gets better soon here.
Yeah, I'll be throwing bags.
All right, I, I promised to do this as quickly as I can because there was so much to talk about with the League of Oregon Cities and some of the tours that we got to see, which were really wonderful. Councilor Reed and I got to attend the Phil and Penny Knight Campus for Accelerating Scientific Impact Tour. We also got to see CAMCOR, the Center for Advanced Materials Characterization in Oregon, which is located in the Lori Lokey Laboratories on the University of Oregon campus. Two really nice and really thoughtful places in which the U of O and surrounding partners have really invested in a variety of scientific disciplines and attempting to bridge public and private interest in essentially helping Oregon with its industrial future. The, the CAMCOR Center was especially neat. It, it basically functions as the U of O hosting this cross-disciplinary study center for any manner of physical science, chemistry, biology, physics, and working also with a material science discipline toward helping companies essentially fix their material science issues. They give a number of need indicators of companies coming with problems related to assessing chemical compounds and how things were or were not working within their products or materials, and basically being able to solve problems like a consultancy. So they're, they're doing some extremely valuable work for a lot of companies and then putting that back into the holistic university mission of advancing the sciences up to and including material science throughout the state. So extremely, extremely insightful stuff with what they're doing, not just for the state really, but they're getting graduate students and professors from all over the world to help build up these programs and assist in their endeavors. So really, really wonderful stuff. I got lucky to be at the site of the Oregon Country Fair out in Veneta for a tour. Show of hands, anyone heard of the Country Fair at least?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep, won't, won't put anybody on the spot as far as attendance, but fascinating dynamic and kind of the central question that they're trying to resolve on the tour is okay. Festival's 54 years old now, and it used to be 5,000 hippies essentially gathering in the woods. So how, so how do you incorporate a festival with a sense of anti-establishment baked into its DNA? And how do you make it legitimate and work on infrastructure operations, emergency management, other endeavors? Which, over the decades, they have taken some great strides toward developing their emergency management and being sophisticated with operations and solving for things like water and power and access to their site, which again, this is, this is five miles outside of the town of Veneta, about 30 miles outside the city of Oregon. Not, not a lot of available resources that they're becking calling, yet they have a military-grade field hospital that they're able to set up each year to handle any of their festival medical needs. As one example of how they're solving problems. So they talked about working with Lane County proper and different divisions and basically making sure that that festival grows up, endures, and also stays a little bit true to some of the character of the Oregon Country Fair. Fascinating example there. Following that tour, I got to see basically the exact opposite, a tour of Hayward Field at the U of O and an understanding of what went into hosting the 2021 IAAF World Athletics Championships. Obviously a major athletic concern for the state of Oregon really, and for the country that it had never been hosted in the United States before. Another just masterclass in emergency management and cross-disciplinary efforts. We were told the working group, for example, had 120 partners within 52 different operating agencies to come together and resolve any concern around not just, not just the U of O and the campus proper, but city of Eugene, Lane County, and even surrounding areas that were affected by the operation of the trials, by bringing the world to Eugene, which however you feel about that city, the world does not always fit inside it so neatly. And they had to both understand that and also be able to stretch their capabilities when they could. So it, it was certainly an event with a number of unique strategic or emergency management challenges. They talked about a few Ethiopian athletes, for example, that sought asylum in the United States amid the championships process, which is its own unique event. But the, the sheer, the sheer volume, the sheer scale and the sheer scope, it's something to behold, and even a city like Kaiser, the, the lessons were absolutely there for how it is that we level up and be a little sophisticated. Mr. Brown and I have talked a bit of shop on that, just the different things that the, the U of O has going on and some of the structures they've tried to put into place. And definitely the U of O is really nice too. They were willing to share further materials with councillors, with city managers, with cities to further optimize our operations. So that one day we may hold cool events like that all the time, who knows? But incredible opportunity. Thank you to everyone who went on the trip, had an absolutely great time with it. Northwest Kaiser Neighborhood Association meeting Wednesday, TSBP committee meeting on Thursday. Both those are here, I believe, 7:00 PM and 6:00 PM respectively for the two. I'll be quiet now, thank you all so much for coming, thank you for this.
All right, thank you very much. Yeah, there was a lot to take in at the League of Oregon Cities. Council Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I will start off with the report from the Public Arts Commission. In there, in that meeting last, no, no, or September rather, we talked about the renewing contracts for the various sculptures on River Road, so we do that periodically. That is just kind of a standing, standing item. And then we also discussed signage for Rosalie's Silly Cows, and we're going to work with Parks Board to see the logistics of that. And then talking about getting those utility boxes wrapped. So that is an exciting project that we hope to see will come to fruition sooner rather than later. So that was about it for Arts Commission. And then this last, a week ago last Saturday, I had the opportunity to go see the Big Band Branch of the Kaiser Community Band play in Silverton, and they did us proud. It was a fantastic performance and on a perfect day, and it was just really nice. Got to chaperone the homecoming dance, and that was a lot of fun. And then I had the Kaiser Heritage Foundation Board meeting, and Robert gave a lot of the highlights, so proud of what they're doing there. The, the museum is really just going above and beyond and really stretching their wings lately, and all the organizations are doing fabulous work there. And also, thank you to Barbara for coming to talk about the library, we love to see what they're doing. And so, yes, that was exciting. The League of Oregon Cities Conference, I was really impressed with. There was not a single breakout session or tour that I went on that I felt I was wasting my time or bored. It was all very valuable material. I went to a lot of community engagement kinds of breakout sessions, I was on the panel of one of them, and
Good job.
So, well, thank you. And it was just really an exciting way to see what other cities in the, in Oregon are doing, and again, kind of gives us perspective on our own accomplishments and give us some pats on the back. And so, really great to see that, and it was also fun to hang out with councillors and Adam and just to be together in that context. And that is about it for me, I think. Our, our mayor also presented at the League of Oregon Cities, and I was not able to attend because I was on a tour at the time, but Public Arts Tour, which is another exciting thing. But anyway, I, I heard great things, and she, again, does us so proud, not only And she, again, does us so proud, not only in the region, but in the state, and thank you for all your work with that.
Thank you, and thank you to my two fact checkers. Mr. Brown and Counselor Duran were in my session to make sure I got it right. You have Counselor Woodard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So for me, on October 7th, we had the American Legion Kaiser Post Salmon Bake, which is a lot of people in the community. It was really fun. Mr. Broadwater talked about Boy State, which is really great to hear about. And for some McNary stuff this past week, we had Homecoming. It was interesting, it was fun, to say the least. And we.
The game was fun, but that's all it was.
Yeah. Yeah, it wasn't a, it was entertaining, I guess, maybe for the other team, you know? And this past Wednesday, we also had our testing day. So we had PSAT, SAT, ACT, all sorts of stuff, ASVAB for military. And then in terms of this week, for sports, we have the McNary varsity soccer. It's going to be at North Salem on Tuesday. And our varsity football is going to be at North Medford as well on the 20th. And for Performing Arts at McNary, we have orchestra and choir concerts on the 24th and 27th respectively, I think. And then we have also, from the McNary Theater Department, we have The Play That Goes Wrong, which will be on October 18th, 19th, 20th, and the 21st at 7:00 PM. And yeah, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Lots going on at McNary High School. Thank you so much for that update. Just a couple of things to wrap up with. I've been working hard with the Midlamet Area Commission on Transportation. The Act has been working on a two-year, or a five-year work plan, two-year work plan that's due to the Oregon Transportation Commission very soon. It's been some fantastic conversations about what the area commissions can be, should be, and some goals for our three-county region, Marion Polkham Hill. So I'm really happy to be part of the team putting this plan together, talking about the infrastructure needs, how we identify our projects, how we advocate for them to the Oregon Transportation Commission to get funding for those projects with an equity and safety lens as paramount for these projects and to make sure that they are all interoperable and multimodal. So great conversations that are happening there. Of course, we can talk a lot, but what I'm always interested in is showing the money. If this gives us more money to our region, I am all in. And I think this really makes us a lot more competitive. Let's see, what hasn't been mentioned yet? Kind of tagging on a little bit with the League of Oregon Cities, the tour I went on was at the Eugene Airport. It was nice to see it from the other side. I know the airport manager, Catherine Stevens, who is now the Chair of the Oregon Aviation Board. And she's done a fabulous job with the evolution of the Eugene Airport, which now hosts seven airlines and growing. So it's great for Oregon, great for our region to have a great airport like that available to us. I was voted in to serve another term on the Board for the Women's Caucus for the League of Oregon Cities. And I was elected to a three-year term of service on the Oregon Mayors Association Board of Directors. So I'll begin service with that organization in January. So I'm really excited to join that team. I did present on property tax and housing. I brought back the presenting materials from, the presenter from Piper Sandler, that was David Williams. He's the Senior Vice President, talking about the story of Measures 5 and 50. This is very meaty information and a lot of mathematics that a lot of people don't know or understand about how we got to where we're at with Measure 50 and something as so very convoluted as the system set up through that, through that ballot measure. I want to thank former Council President Lisbon Smith, who gave me her information on Measure 50 from the point of view of a mortgage lender. She was supposed to be there as a presenter, but the day before the presentation, she became a grandmother. So guess where she was at, as she should be. So congratulations to Todd Lisbon Smith, who are the proud grandparents of a beautiful little girl. Moving on from there, coming up will be our City and Commissioners Breakfast on Thursday. The Midlamet Valley Homeless Alliance Board will be meeting on the 19th. We're continuing to work as a region to absorb the additional $850,000 that were reallocated from Multnomah County to our Marion Polk region by the governor because we've been able to meet some of the goals and in some cases exceed the goals, the targets that the governor set out for our region with the emergency order dollars. For example, on prevention for eviction, our, we've already exceeded the target that the governor set. We're at 155% and climbing. So a lot of great work, over 1,000 households have already been served to prevent eviction and thereby prevent homelessness in our two-county region. We are also being able, we're also meeting goals and set to exceed the goals on emergency shelter and rapid rehousing. I want to thank all of our service providers working in collaboration with all of the governments that are working together to address the needs of people experiencing homelessness. Our little three-and-a-half-year-old continuum of care is really working well together. And the most important thing is that more people are being sustainably housed and moving into positive outcomes. A really quick example is there are new Youth and Young Adult Shelter. Within a week of that place opening, five of the residents moved on to positive outcomes from there. They just needed that touch base stabilization, and they were on to a permanent place to live. So as just an example, one of many across our two-county region where we are doing, taking practical steps to meet the needs of people in our community. So I want to thank everybody working hard on that. Last but not least, I'll be a part of a meeting for the West Extension, thus the West Commuter Rail. And there was a bill that Representative Mannix put into the last legislature, it didn't get funded, to fund a study for the extension of the commuter rail from Wilsonville all the way through and down to Salem, including Kaiser. So we will be convening, we, as the Council of Governments, is convening a meeting on that on the 25th in Woodburn. And I'll be part of that conversation and bring back information from that. And then just one final wrap-up. I've been invited to attend these Let's Tribal Council Dinner at their annual restoration dinner with the Tribal Council. And I'll be able to attend that this year. So I'm looking forward to that. And thank Chair Pigsley for the gracious invitation to join them in this celebration. So that is all I've got for right now. We're a little busy, but that's how we do it, right? Okay, agenda input. The next Monday, we will meet at 6:00 PM for a work session on right-of-way and franchise fees. On Monday, November 6th, at 7:00 PM, we will meet in regular session. On Monday, November 13th, at 6:00 PM, we have a work session. And I was talking with the city manager this morning. And we are going to, let's see, it's November 13th? Yes. So that will be on the Community Center Management Update. Is that correct, Mr. Brown? Okay. So at the Council Direction, we've been working, they've been working on the Community Center, and we'll be bringing back a report for conversation on that update. And, and then we'll meet in regular session the week after that. That is all I have. Is there anything else for the good of the order? All right, thank you all. The time is 8:39. We are adjourned.